Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley. The City Council receives a separate stipend from the Community Services District if any CSD business is conducted at this meeting. Item A on our agenda is to call the meeting to order, so we will officially call the meeting to order at 6:04 PM. And today's date is December 10th, 2024. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. As always, will be led by Councilmember Delgado. And please remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance. We have two invocations tonight. We'll have one in English and one in Spanish. The Spanish invocation will be given by Pastor Arturo Linares from Iglesia Ríos de Agua Viva. And the English invocation will be given by Pastor Bishop Sykes from Crossword Church.
Please stand. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance by placing your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Arturo Linares, are you here with us this evening?
Good evening, buenas tardes. Voy a hacer la invocación en español si está bien con ustedes. Señor Jesús, te doy gracias por esta oportunidad de invocar tu nombre sobre cada funcionario, sobre nuestro alcalde, sobre nuestros nuevos dirigentes, y cada uno de los líderes de esta hermosa ciudad de Moreno Valley. Bendicelos, ayúdalos, dirígelos, sé tú con ellos señor. Te lo pedimos en el nombre de Jesús. Amén, amén.
Muchas gracias. Good evening Pastor.
Let's look to the Lord. Our Father and our God, we thank you for who you are. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be witnesses to the growth of Moreno Valley. We come before you uplifting our mayor, Ulysses to you right now. We thank you for his wisdom. We thank you for his can-do spirit. Father, uplift the City Council. I pray right now, Father, that you allow this council to realize that you have given them a great work to do, growing the great city of Moreno Valley. We thank you for vision. We thank you for a can-do spirit. Father, we know that you have us in the palm of your hand. Continue to allow us to flourish as we follow your lead. We submit all things unto you. It's in Christ Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you once again to Pastor Arturo Linares and Pastor Bishop Sykes for the invocations this evening. At this time, we will go ahead and move into item D, which is roll call. Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Delgado.
Here ma'am.
Mayor Pertemp Bernard.
Here.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Present.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Madam Clerk. Next up, staff introductions please.
Patty Rodriguez, City Clerk.
Paul Radica, Deputy City Clerk.
Stephen Quintanilla, City Attorney.
Mike Lee, City Manager.
Brian Mohan, Assistant City Manager Administration.
Lana Jimenez, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Sean Kelleher, Assistant City Manager Development.
Angelica Fraus Delupo, Community Development Director.
Lisa Walker, Director of Public Works.
Claudia Torres, Special Events and Facilities Division Manager.
Robert Cardenas, Human Resources Director.
Keith Gemmell, Acting Economic Development and Housing Director.
And Jesse Park, Fire Chief.
Thank you so much staff. It's always a pleasure to be in the chamber to conduct the people's business. That brings us next to item F, which is public comments on matters on the agenda. And a reminder that this is a special meeting, a special City Council meeting, pursuant to California Government Code Section 54954.3. There is a three-minute time limit per person. Please complete a purple speaker slip and submit that to the City Clerk if you would like to speak. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the Presiding Officer or to the City Council. And I ask that all speakers keep their comments respectful and that members of the audience remain courteous toward those at the podium. And I know right now is the holiday season, so you could just feel it in the air, right? There's that Christmas joy in the air. Everybody has a smile on their face, so uh, really, really appreciate everybody coming out and everybody that's watching at home, thank you for joining us. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we do Mayor. The first three speakers are Riley Peak, followed by Martin Cabrera, followed by Daryl Tarrell.
So, good evening everyone. It is a privilege to stand before you tonight and celebrate the accomplishments of our newly elected and re-elected leaders here in Moreno Valley. First, I'd like to start off by thanking or congratulating Mayor Cabrera on his reelection. Your ste- your steady leadership and unwavering commitment to the city have laid a strong foundation for growth and opportunity. You have consistently demonstrated a vision for a brighter future and I'm excited to see how you will continue to guide Moreno Valley forward. To Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz, congratulations on earning another term. Your passion for our community and relentless dedication to its well-being are unmatched. You have been a steadfast advocate for the people of Moreno Valley and your impact is seen and felt throughout our city. And to our newly elected Councilmember Gonzalez, congratulations on your election. Your enthusiasm and fresh ideas are exactly what our city needs to reach new heights. Your contributions will strengthen the City Council and possibly shape the future of Moreno Valley. As we move forward, I'm excited to work with all of you to ensure that Moreno Valley continues to be the place where ambition meets opportunity. The city where dreams soar higher than ever before. Your leadership, vision, and determination will make, will help make those dreams a reality for our residents. The future of Moreno Valley is bright and you're, with your vision and determination, I know you will accomplish incredible things for the community. Congratulations again to each one of you. I can't wait to see how you will continue to shape this amazing city and help our community reach even greater heights.
The next three speakers are Martin Cabrera, followed by Daryl Tarrell, followed by Luis Palomares.
Good evening everyone, present and un-present. So, uh, it's excitement. Once again, congratulations, Mr. Mayor, my dear son, my only, unique son. Um, you have made this family so proud. You don't know how much, how deep inside we feel it. So, your brother Martin, your sister Denise, and your mom, myself. You know, it's awesome, the work you're doing, not only for you or for the family, also for the family of Moreno Valley. Alright, so it's a family here. It's a family work. A public servant, that's what it means. Get the people together and work for them. One applause, and for the ones that got elected, new elected, congratulations. And for the ones that tried hardest to get there and didn't make it, congratulations also. Because once again, this is a team work and that's encouragement that things can be too different. So, at the end, love with love is rewarded. Thank you so much and God bless you, all of you, especially your Mr. Mayor. I love you. Your family loves you. And me, myself, and the people of Moreno Valley, they create long-lasting life for yourself and long, successful life. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
The next three speakers are Daryl Tarrell, followed by Luis Palomares, followed by Eligio Rangel.
Uh, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Uh, thank, and thank you, uh, congratulations to all of you guys, uh, got re-elected, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my councilmember, uh, Elena Baca Santa Cruz, and I knew my fellow, uh, former planning commissioner, um, Gonzalez. I wanna say, start off by thanking the 10,251 of you that voted for me. I thank you for believing in me and placing your confidence and your hopes in my candidacy. Thank you for showing the love for me. This, this was a long and hard fought campaign. And that's the nature of campaigns. That's the nature of democracy. It is hard and sometimes contentious and noisy. But the day after, we have to remember that we are actually on all, on one team. We are all Moreno Valians. We all want the best for our city. Sometimes we forget that elections are often where we emphasize what sets us apart. But the American instinct has never been to find isolation in opposite corners. It is to find the strength in our common creed, to forge unity from our great diversity, to sustain that strength and unity even when it's hard. And when the election is over, as we search for ways to come together, to reconnect with one another. That's why there is so much more that unites us than divides us. This is the city we must stand on our neighbors, stand in our neighbor's shoes, to see through their eyes and understand their pain. We have the duty to fight against poverty, even if we're do- we're doing well off. To care about the child who's in the decrepit school, even if your children are doing fine. To show compassion towards the immigrant family with the knowledge that most of us are only a few generations removed from similar hardships. We will have difficult days ahead. It is easy to settle for something less, but we have to set our sights a little bit higher. We are a people of improbable hope that can do big things. And as I said before, in this community, we deserve the best of everything. We are better than Riverside, we're better than Marietta, Temecula, Palm Springs. We could do better. And I know with this leadership up here, we're gonna take this city to a higher level, to a hi- our horizon that we only could dream about. Because that's what Moreno Valley has always been about. It's about working together as a team. Even though we have difference of opinion, we have a common purpose. And that common purpose is that we love our, we love our community, we love our children. We want them to have the best of everything. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Luis Palomares, followed by Eligio Rangel, followed by Anika Herrero.
Luis Palomares, wow, what a day in Moreno Valley. Congratulations one and all. Elena Baca Santa Cruz, congratulations. You've got a true heart of a servant. You're here to serve and you've been serving all the li- all the time I've known you. It's been like, wow, almost 30 years. Thank you, thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it. And I want to leave you with, with a scripture. Give me a break, let me, let me get it here. Uh, let's see where it's at. And this is, this is the way I feel. This is who you are. And, um, golly, I lost it. Oh my goodness, I did lose it. Wow. Where'd it go? Give me a minute, I got three minutes, right? God, I just had it up right now and I-
We have pastors in the audience if you need some help too.
I, I know my scriptures and thank you anyway. I'm gonna, this isn't, this is for her and it's really something that came from, it came to me today and, uh, wow. Oh my goodness, I don't know what happened with it. I guess it wasn't meant for me to say it here. Maybe I gotta do it in person. I think I sent it to you. Elena? Okay, thank you. Let me look. Hey, I'm nervous today. That's not like me. What's really going on? Hey, it's really a new day in Moreno Valley. We are gonna end this, um, meeting on a high note and we're gonna start it on a high note for next year. So I'm saying Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, while I'm, while I'm looking for my text here. And here we go. Okay, Proverbs 23:18. "Your future is bright with hope and nothing can take it away from you. Trust in God. He has a plan for you." Thank you so much and thank you for the councilmembers and all we do in the community and the activists and all the people that came out to support you and our staff. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Eligio Rangel, followed by Anika Herrero, followed by Joanne Lira.
Good evening. I want to offer my congratulations to all the candidates that are running, um, this time around. Um, especially want to offer, uh, congratulations to our mayor, Ulises Cabrera. He, um, he told me a while back that he wanted to support students or kids in our community. And he's really done that. Um, he, uh, I helped run some chess, uh, tournaments here at our, in our community. And, uh, and he really came out and supported our chess program and I really, I'm very thankful for that and I'm glad he'll continue to do that. And, uh, I, I also know that there's plans, the city has plans on building a new library and having, uh, like a steam or gaming part of it on it. And I just want to congratulate, most of the, most people that are here are, you know, adults and there's a lot of other issues coming through, but I gotta thank you for taking the time to also think about our younger citizens or residents. And I, you know, my congratulations are to everybody and I also want to offer my congratulations to Erlan Gonzalez. He ran a great positive campaign and I just see things moving forward for our city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Anika Herrero, followed by Joanne Lira, followed by Lorena Santa Cruz.
Hi, good evening everyone. I'm not the type to come up and speak. I'm not really good with public speaking, but my mom wanted me to come forth because she knows that, um, Mayor Ulises, that you do a lot of good things and she wanted me to tell you, they, um, um, you're really good for this city and I know you believed in me too because you went to my graduation. So thank you for that. Um, and I just want to say I didn't know you at first and didn't know about, much about politics. Then I really, I started showing up to these events and I got to know everyone and knew the good that was going on in this community. And I didn't have that, um, I didn't have, um, that kind of understanding, being that I was younger and I didn't feel like I really fit in since that everyone was older. But then I went and I realized there are younger people and I feel like the younger public needs to be involved because we're the next generation. We need to be on top of what is going on in our community because we're the next generation. You know, so I really think that it was important for me to come forth and get myself involved and then tell other people and inform other people what's going on and tell them that you shouldn't be afraid of politics and you shouldn't be afraid to believe in something and run for something. So that's all I want to say. And congratulations to everyone that won and congratulations to the ones who didn't win, but, um, they put their best efforts and I really saw that. And, um, yeah, so, thank you and congrats to everybody.
The next three speakers are Joanne Lira, followed by Lorena Santa Cruz, followed by Justin Jackson.
Good evening everyone. Um, I'm here to congratulate, congratulate Ulises and Erlan. I met Ulises in 2016 as a classmate in my philosophy class. He was really telling me that he was gonna run for City Council. And what made me believe in him is that he was very active in the community. Meeting with the police officers at Starbucks, jacking the bucks. Um, panetta bread with the low income, meeting low-income people, Hispanic. Not just, um, caring for the safety, but also for education. I was, um, part of the, uh, permanent advisory committee for a district. And he showed up to all the meetings, caring for education, getting involved, how important is education for everyone, including low-income. I'm really emotional also, uh, to tell a little bit about Erlan. He's a leader, um, from San Christopher Church. I'm also a leader there. I'm very active in the community and I see Erlan as a leader in my church and I know he's gonna do great thing with Ulises because he lives with God. And um, with God, everything is possible. Matthew 9:26. Uh, thank you so much and congratulations again, Ulises and Erlan.
Next three speakers are Lorena Santa Cruz, followed by Justin Jackson, followed by Donovan Sadiq.
Sorry, I'm a little short. Ready? Perfect. Good evening. It is an incredible honor to stand here tonight as we celebrate my mom, Councilwoman Elena Baca Santa Cruz, who is being sworn in for her first official full term. This moment is deeply meaningful for our family and our community. A little over two years ago, after losing my grandma Victoria Baca, my mother decided she was needed, much like my grandma did before her, and she rolled up her sleeves just as she did. She stepped into this role, continuing the legacy of my grandmother, who was not only the first Latina elected to the City Council, but also a trailblazer whose dedication inspired so many. My grandma's memory lives on in each decision my mom makes and I know she would be almost as proud as I am today. To me, my mom is a superhero. Watching her grow into this role, balancing the weight of leadership with the compassion and resilience that she brings to everything that she does, has been nothing short of amazing. I've grown up in these chambers and it's been an even more, it's been even more incredible to watch her grow, planting deeper roots in this city and showing us all what true dedication looks like. Mom, thank you for being a role model, not only to me and for so many others, but to so many, for so many others as well. Congratulations on this new chapter and I love you. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Justin Jackson, followed by Donovan Sadiq, followed by Karina Cabrera.
Good evening, City Council. It is such a beautiful night to be here and like you said, Mayor, we are in the holiday spirit and you can feel that love and support in the room. First and foremost, I'm here to congratulate all of you all for running and for winning. Councilwoman Elena Baca Santa Cruz, congratulations on a fully elected term. Mayor Cabrera, congratulations on your term. And specifically, I want to give my congratulations to Councilman Elek Gonzalez. Um, it was a hard-fought race. You gave me a run for my money, quite literally. Um, but I definitely think, um, the right person and the right per, um, the right man won this election at the right time. So again, congratulations. And I look forward to doing my best to support, um, all of you all. Um, not just the ones that got elected, but the current councilmembers, Councilmember Delgado and Council, Councilwoman, um, Shalinda Bernard as well. Um, all of you all are doing great work for our city and it's really humbling to stand before you all and see the great work and the great policy that you all have, um, for our city. So I hope to be a part of that any way possible. And again, I just lend my support and my congratulations to all of you tonight. Congratulations.
The next two speakers are Donovan Sadiq, followed by Karina Cabrera.
Alright, it's a little tall for me. Alright, good evening, good evening everybody. Here we are. Another movement of the Rubik's Cube. We, I think we've got the right people and the right place and the right, right, uh, spots. This has been a very strange election year. Very strange. You've got people voting for a person because she's a woman. You've got a person, people voting for people because they're black. You've got people voting and just vote. It's, it's been very strange. But my point of the thing is, people are voting and people now are paying attention of what's going on here in the United States. I look, and I've been in this city for a long time, not as long as a lot of people, but I've been here long enough. And I've seen a lot of changes. And one of the great things that I'm seeing in this election cycle is I met a lot of new, young candidates. Nothing against you guys. And that's a good thing here for the city of Moreno Valley because for a long time, we've had the same people, myself included, who got involved in politics. And we've been here fighting the fight, doing what we need to do, and we can't do it forever. As I look back and I see some of the old guard that is not with us, I always remember. But I'm gonna speak, congratulations to everybody that's up there. Uh, and I also want to do a public service announcement. Tomorrow, 5:00 PM, Corey Jackson is having a virtual town hall, Sixty's Assembly. You can watch it on all the major platforms. If you get a chance, go ahead and do that. Stay involved. There's no excuse why you don't know what's going on in your city. But I want to address specifically my councilmember, the person that I supported, Elena Baca Santa Cruz. You are your mother's daughter. No doubt in my mind. You've done a lot of great things in the district and if I didn't think you did that, as you guys all know, I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't say, say it at all. And then I look at your daughter and I see a third uh, Santa Cruz coming in, in legacy somewhere down the line, be it here, be it county, whatever the deal is. Y- your family has a, a good, uh, background in service. But I don't want anybody to forget, this is a great city. We've grown a lot and I'm been blessed enough to see, I'm one of the people that have seen this city grow. Grow from its very humble beginnings in 84 and stuff like that. And, and it's a great city and we will continue to go on and be great, but we have to move the city forward and we're, and I think we have the right people in place to do that. Um, didn't support everybody, but I do want to tell, like I told Erlan during the, uh, uh, public thing. Don't forget about the biggest employer we have here in Moreno Valley and that's March Air Reserve Base. Good luck.
The next speaker is Karina Cabrera.
Good evening everyone. I'm gonna try to get to this and not create. Um, I'm here to congratulate my amazing husband, Ulises Cabrera, on his reelection. I'm extremely proud of you and I have no doubt that our son and daughter that soon to be born is also extremely proud to have you as a father and as a role model. I thank God for bringing us together and for giving us the strength to continue, no matter what obstacles we face, because we have faced many. And here we are. And here we are still standing. It is an honor to be your companion, your wife, your lifelong partner. And I admire you for your passion, your determination and your compassionate heart. And really wanna thank all the residents who placed their faith in you and really gave your, I think, biggest victory yet from, um, since you were elected in twenty seventeen. And this demonstrates that they truly value your commitment to public service and they also value your leadership. I have the unique opportunity to see the heart that you bring every single day and the hard work that you put in. And often you make sacrifices that go unseen, but I see them every single day. I can't wait to see what you will continue to accomplish for the residents, for the families and for the children of Moreno Valley. Your legacy continues as you paved the way for our young leaders, many who now are excited and possibly wanna run for office one day because they see you in your seat as our youngest directly elected mayor in our city's history. May God continue to bless you, Ulysses, as you continue to move our city forward. We love you so much.
The next three speakers are Steven Alvarado followed by Christopher Baca followed by Edgar Montez.
That was so sudden. Um, hello, everyone. Good evening. I just wanna say congratulations to everybody who won, uh, and to those who did not win. You guys put in work, trust me, I know. And we all did, we all did. I just wanna say it's been an honor, Ulysses, to be a part of such, uh, you know, campaign and overall just to see so many things in this city that I grew up in. Um, I remember when I moved into Moreno Valley, uh, I went to Bear Valley Elementary. And this city has been very, very great to me. Um, and I just wanna give back to the city in whatever way I can. And I hope, you know, the best for every single one of you. I hope God blesses every single one of you and protects you guys. And overall, I just wanna say once again, congratulations. And, um, thank you for the opportunity and thank you guys for having me here. You guys have a good day.
Three speakers, Christopher Baca followed by Edgar Montez followed by Joanne Stephan.
Good evening, electives and, um, newly elected, um, individuals. Um, I just wanna say I hope we're turning a new page here. I hope there's a lot of new ideals that can flourish and happen. If, if we work together and all, all the stuff we need to do for the city, we need to, we need to create a charter for the city. We need to, uh, have some changes as far as transparency and equality. And, uh, I hope, uh, this new, new council can work together and start working on, on some of the things that that we really need to get, get done. And I really honestly believe that the first thing on the menu should be to work on the charter. Because I feel that we need to, uh, uh, bring in some campaign regulations, some type of, uh, transparency again, as far as, uh, being equal to developers. All developers should be given the equal opportunities that, uh, anybody gets in this city. Anybody that's bringing in, uh, revenue should be, uh, respected and helped, not just a single, uh, developer. So I hope that's a priority and I look forward. And congratulations to our new mayor and especially to my great niece, Elena Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Next three speakers Edgar Montez followed by Joanne Stephan followed by Elliot Overton.
Good evening. Buenas noches. Everybody still awake? All right. Um, I just want to, um, uh, congr- also congratulate, uh, the mayor, uh, the reelected city council members and the newly elected council members. Um, I just want to say that, um, uh, I'm here today because of Elena and her parents. Uh, her family. Um, I myself am an elected official. I'm a school board member in the city of Rialto for Rialto Unified School District, uh, just completed fourteen years. Um, and, uh, and I plan on serving, uh, for as long as the community wants me to. But, um, I wanted to just say that, uh, Elena has been an inspiration to me and when I see her, um, and when I hear her speak, I say, Jesus Christ, that's Victoria's daughter right there. Um, because they have a passion. They have a passion for civil service. They have a passion for the community. They have a passion for fighting what, for what's right. And, and if anybody that knows, when you fight for what's right and you stand up for yourself, it makes people angry. It's real easy to be a pushover. It's real easy to be a yes man. It's real easy to be a rubber stamp. But when you stand up to people and you look them dead in the eye and you call them out or you stand up for what's right or you won't, you won't look the other way or turn the other cheek, that makes people uncomfortable. So I heard somebody say earlier that there's, sometimes there's differences, people have differences of opinions and that's fine and dandy. But I encourage you guys here as the leadership to work together as best as possible. It's okay to agree to disagree. Together for the best interest of this community. I have family here, I have friends here. And like I said, um, I myself am a uh, Elena and her parents were mentors to me. So, so much that Raoul Wilson and Victoria Baca to me were my ninos. They were my godparents. And one of the things that I tell all of the youth in, in my community and, and wherever I go and wherever I speak, what I tell them is, look, my mentors told me, Raoul Wilson and Victoria Baca, if you don't like your teachers, then become the teachers. If you don't like your principals, become the principals. If you don't like the work that your civil servants are doing, then you become the civil servants. And that's what Victoria did and that's what Elena's doing. That's what I did. I used to go to marches, I used to go to protests and I still do if I have to. But at one point, activists sometimes realize, hey, you know what? We need to fight on all fronts. It's, it's ea- it's, it's, it's easier to pick up a sign and march and protest and scream and kick all you want, but it's a lot easier to make a difference sitting at that table. And that's one of the things.
The next three speakers are Joanne Stephan followed by Elliot Overton followed by Ruth Rodriguez.
I would just like to congratulate all of you who ran. Uh, Ulysses, you ran a good campaign and you won. Congratulations. Uh, Elena Baca Santa Cruz, um, I've known you since you were a little girl. And I, I always knew that you would become a public servant. I don't know why. I just always did. And I felt like your daughter is, was gonna do the same thing, even though she went a different way for a while, because that's just in your blood. Your mom has instilled great values in all her children and your, her, their, her legacy frankly. And, um, I am so proud that you have ran a good campaign and now you're gonna, uh, have your full elected term. We had, uh, asked you to run so you would finish out your mother's term. But then you found out that this is your calling. This is what you really wanna do because you wanna make a difference. And we're so proud of you and it's just like, uh, Edgar said. There was a time when, you know, we tell our own children, you wanna make a difference, then you become the difference. You, you know, I never thought I'd be sitting, you know, where I'm sitting and doing what I'm doing, but you know, I even told your mother, I said, I don't know if I can even do that. She says, you know what? She could see what I could do, even though I couldn't see it myself. And that's what she had in her and that's what you have in you. And I'm, want to congratulate Erlan. I really like the guy. He was my, uh, fellow planning commissioner and I'm so happy that he's gonna be sitting on the council. And, um, public service is always a good thing because there's where the change can be made. And a lot of the residents that live here actually stay here and they wanna make a difference. And like the young lady said, Annika, she sees that her eyes got opened. And a lot of times, that's what I always tell my kids, the light bulb goes off. And the light bulb went off with her and now I believe that sooner or later she may be sitting up there. Because you, you can make a difference. So I just wanna say congratulations to all of you. I can see a brighter future. I can see smiles up there. I can see laughter up there, like I said in the last council meeting. And you guys can work together and make a huge change. And I can see it. It's a new day and a new dawn. And like I said, congratulations to every one of you.
The next three speakers are Elliot Overton followed by Ruth Rodriguez followed by Stan Yumbo.
Hello, everyone. I just wanna say congratulations to all those who ran and won. Uh, and a special, special congratulations to, um, Mayor Ulysses Cabrera, my friend. I met him about eight years ago, when he came to my church for Bible study, when my dad was the pastor. Um, it was Moreno Valley Christian Chapel Fourth Square Church. And, um, and I know, um, I've been with you since you ran, um, the first time, just the fourth time that you got elected. So you're very dedicated, hardworking. And, um, and I know my dad would be very proud of you. He passed away in twenty eighteen. But, um, but I just wanna say congratulations. You're, um, you're a man of God. You're a man of wisdom. You know, um, I told you last time you got elected, it's not about how young you are, you know? You know, Jeremiah was a prophet, you know, he, and, uh, God told him, don't say that you're too young, so. I'm very proud of you and, um, been doing a great job. You definitely have a servant's heart. You're compassionate. You have wisdom. You learn quick. And you have an ear to the community. You listen to, uh, the heart of the people, what's been going on and you definitely are out to make a difference as I'm sure all of you are. And I just, uh, appreciate, um, the fact that you are all here to serve the community and make a difference, to make a better Moreno Valley together, you know, in unity. And so, congratulations, um, also congratulations to Karina and yourself, you know, you have a baby on the way, another one. Um, and I look forward to, um, the accomplishment that you're gonna make, you know, um, uh, that's gonna help better Moreno Valley and the people here. So, okay. May God bless you all.
Next three speakers are Ruth Rodriguez followed by Stan Yumbo followed by Maribel Nunez.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. I just want to say that we're very proud of you, Ulysses Cabrera. Thank you for everything. Thank you why you do for Moreno Valley. Your family from Exelon Empire Real Estate, we are very proud of you. Thank you.
Next two speakers are Stan Yumbo followed by Maribel Nunez.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Wow, that's so many people. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Yumbo. And I'm so glad to be here because it's a great day for Moreno Valley. Uh, I've learned to know people in Moreno Valley, especially your mother was actually the first one that I talked to in this council. And I even have a video with her. That was fantastic. It's online. And then, of course, I met my neighbor, the mayor. And literally, actually, it was, it was my neighbor and, uh, before the baby came up, I was basically playing with his dog. Lick my face. The mayor didn't even understand why. Because I have dogs myself. And then, of course, I met my other neighbor. Shay, or Shalinda, how you doing? Uh, the greatest thing is about these, um, today is the city to come together. Uh, I've seen people, I've met people beside the council. I've met some great people. Uh, I think Joanne Stephan is here, Luis Paramares, Sadiq. I mean, again, that's part of the community. Uh, everybody I've mentioned, I mean, I didn't mention everybody. We know them because they are involved and today is the same thing. I think it would be an example for people to see and say, let's get involved in the city so we can move forward. The only way we can soar is if people see unity in this city. We cannot be united if we don't work together. But of course, like I've, I've told, uh, Ms. Paramares, I say, do not hesitate to come over and be the opposition. That's not democracy. If something happened, of course, don't come with insult, but say something in your heart and mention it so we can correct as a city. So I'm not gonna take too much time. Congratulations to Erlan Gonzalez. He's not here. I'm gonna just mention something from, uh, Henry Ford. What are you at? Oh, wow. I was like, what's going on? You, I thought you have a flu or something. Congratulations. Oh, Martin, Ahmed Martin, the father of Mr. Cabrera. So before, I know. Let me, let me try to play Luis Paramares and try to find what I'm trying to say. So Henry Ford say, coming together is a beginning. Staying together is a progress. Working together is a success. So congratulations, everybody. Thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Maribel Nunez followed by Patricia Alvarado followed by Juan Navarro.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maribel Nunez with I E Votes. Uh, we're a coalition that get out the vote for mobile home park residents and renters. And congratulations to the mayor and, and council member Elena and Erlan. Um, I know him for like since two thousand and nine, so it feels very family to me about him winning and his family being here. Uh, the Reese family, so congratulations, everyone. I look forward, uh, one of the reasons we got involved in getting out the vote is to make sure we get, uh, more tenant protections, affordable housing and inclusion housing. Uh, there are other cities that have done inclusion housing, so Moreno Valley. So I think we've got the votes to move things forward so that we take advantage of other extra resources for our communities. And so, yeah, I wanted to congratulate everybody here and I look forward to the conversations with the current council members and the new council members on affordable housing and renter, rentalization and everything else. Thank you so much for your time.
Next three speakers are Patricia Alvarado followed by Juan Navarro followed by Roy Blackard.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm here to congratulate Ulysses Cabrera. I'm so happy. I feel so excited, like it's my son. Okay, because, not because I'm old, okay? You look like my, my brother. But, uh, I lived here for twenty-two years. And as community leader without title, without position, just with a heart and a passion. And you know me, not just you. Before you, they know me. Because without title, when you have a really, really passion in your heart, you don't need title, you don't need nothing. You just need that. It's, it's in your blood, you know? You wake up early and say, you, I wanna do it. And I'm very proud and I wanna say thank you because you're thinking in my son Stephen. Now you see how it's, right? He have my legacy. And I know you guys wanna do something good in this city. It's not because you plan, it's because it's God planned. And I wanna just stand with this. I say, I don't wanna talk because when I take this one, I, I have two hours talking. So, don't worry. Okay, so Jeremy twenty-nine eleven. All this campaign, when you start this campaign and you talk to my family and say, we wanna work hard, that's our grandest family do it, always, in everything. Everything we do, we doing, we wanna make it, make it happen. And the numbers in these elections, the numbers, talking more than the words. Because the numbers say the community support you. We are support you. And now you need to do your job with all the people that's around you because you are the leader in this city now. Okay, so let me just stand with this. I need my glasses. I told you, I'm very young. After forty, you don't see the, the little letters. Okay? Okay, I know you guys think it's hard, but no. Okay? Okay, Jeremy twenty-nine eleven plans to prosper you and not to harm. You plans to give you hope and a future. That is the plan for God for this city. I grow up with this city and I know we wanna grow up more in the name of Jesus. Okay? Thank you.
The next two speakers are Juan Navarro followed by Roy Blackard.
Hello, um, my name is Juan Navarro. I'm the owner of Eastside Art House, uh, community leader here in the Inon Empire. And I spend a lot of my time uplifting artists in communities and, uh, And I just wanna congratulate the mayor for his achievements. Thank you for your leadership. And I just wanna speak on behalf of the artists that I have spoken to. Every time they reach out to you, they, they call, you know, hey, come celebrate this mural reveal. You know, like there's this new mural on Alessandro Library, you know, like Andrea Lopez, Miriam. So all these artists, the art community is tight knit across the IE. And being able to see artists that were born here in Moreno Valley, create work for Moreno Valley, has been transformational for them. So I just wanna be here as a representative of the art community to say, thank you for all the programming you guys built to give hope to these artists, but also show up and be a servant to the people. Because the community is there to celebrate the artwork, the artists, but having you just adds to the honor of that event. So just being available and accessible, it's really speaks on your character. And I hope that, I mean, I've seen a lot of congratulations in the community today. So being able to see that, I'm sure you serve much more than just artists. But from my little corner, I'd just like to say thank you and congratulations.
The last speaker is Roy Blackard.
Too early. Enjoy this day. It's as good as it gets. The rest of this ride is like jumping out of the airplane, and you pull the ripcord and the chute doesn't open. If you don't believe me, ask your colleagues. Daryl mentioned that we are better than X, Y, and Z. Saying those words doesn't make it true. Going out there and proving it, and putting in the work. Dedicating that this community is going to come together. This community is going to get back engaged, like the old guard that Donovan keeps disparaging us. This community was engaged. We did do some movers and shakers. And when this city was born a little over 40 years ago, it had the best economic and education demographics in this whole county. You know where we're at today. We got a lot of challenges ahead. But it's not going to happen. We're not going to get to that place. We're not gonna get to that place of respectability until we all decide that's where we're going to go. There's been a lot of people, a lot of issues. Campaigns have been won, elections have been won, a lot of people won and lost. But as I always say at these times, in these odd-numbered years is when you get the stuff done. Because for the most part, you're free from the election cycle and as much as the politics as we can set aside. So my challenge to everybody in this community in '25 is to get engaged, come out here, put your ideas in, even though we may disagree on things, but even though sometimes everybody thinks I does, even I don't have all the right answers. But it takes everybody's, what we need to do is take the best of what everybody puts together, put it in the pot, and then we may be referred to as the best. That's the only way it's gonna happen. And it's up to us. It's our decision if we're gonna make it happen.
The next two speakers are Gabriela Mendez, followed by James Vega.
Oh, he's tall. Hi, good evening. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to come and congratulate you all for your reelections. And of course, Erlan too. I don't know if you're here. Hey, congratulations. I'm so excited that you guys are here and that I am able to serve under such great leadership. And truly, this is such a tremendous commitment. You guys are here all the time. And this is a city that is growing. So I just wanted to genuinely offer my congratulations. And again, thank you for, for serving our great city. Yeah, I look forward to, to being here with you guys more often. Thank you.
The next speaker is James Vega.
Good evening, everybody. My name is James Vega on behalf of Robert Garcia Boxing Academy. Mayor Ulysses, we just came to give you our respect and thank you very much for what you've put together, the city, Sean, Mike, Brian, Melissa, all you guys that are helping us put this together. We truly, truly appreciate it. I've been a member of the community for 25 years now. And seeing and working with youth and what we're putting together for these kids and then the youth program that we're putting together is super key for growth. And the response that you guys have given us and the support. I know the community doesn't know what we're doing yet, but coming in 2025, obviously, we want to change some lives with these kids. And it starts with the youth, the foundation of what we can do. So without your support and your attention, it's very hard to accomplish that. And I'm really, I'm really, really happy that we're able to put that together with you guys. And the intention and, and obviously, everything that we received, the, the love behind this is fantastic. And in 2025, we're gonna open up something huge for the city. And on this public forum, of course, a lot of people don't know, like I said, what we got going on. But, but it's gonna influence a lot of youth in a positive manner. When kids have a passion for where they're growing up and what they can do within the city. And we build strong minds. We bring, we bring strong leaders at a young age. So you know how that goes, Ulysses, and we appreciate you. And we thank you guys for everything you're doing.
We have one more speaker, Mayor. Jesús Alaman.
It's great to see all you guys, staff. You guys are doing the awesome work. Congratulations to Ms. Elena Baca. Congratulations, Mr. Cabrera. Nice to see you guys too. I just wanted, again, just say congratulations, like everybody's been saying. I feel with 2025 coming here in Moreno Valley now, we're just gonna be awesome, you know? Erlan Gonzalez, congratulations. I need some more restaurants in District Three, please. And I think we all agree, you know, we need more food in District Three. But overall, just, you know, kinda just, you know, think about our kids. Think about the future. Try to get them more mentors, more people. And I really feel that, even though you guys are gonna do a great job, the community, man, the community is gonna do here to overlook and to kinda see. And I think each little nonprofit, everything is just gonna happen, man. 2025 has a lot of good things happening. And my daughter too. My daughter hasn't been around, but just a little thing we're at. I wanna be a grandparent in February, and we're gonna be expecting that. So 2025, again, it's just gonna be a whole thing. Juan Navarro with the art. If you guys, I know a lot of, there's a little 50/50 where some people like the art, some people don't. I feel the art is very priceless. I like enjoying going to the library and seeing these, seeing Martin Luther King, Cesar Chavez, seeing them. And I go there, and it's just inspiration. And I thank you guys for all doing that. And I hope that you just keep going and going. Okay, so thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Mayor, that concludes all of public comments.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And thank you so much to all of our public speakers for sharing those very kind words with us. Really appreciate you joining us. And with that, we will go ahead and move into our next item on the agenda, which is a special order of business. That is G1, a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 5, 2024, declaring the official results and such other matters as provided by law. And I'll turn it over to our city clerk to get us started with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I am pleased to announce the certified results of the November 5, 2024 general municipal election conducted for the city of Moreno Valley. This election included the selection of a citywide mayor, council members for District One and Three, and Measure U, the Moreno Valley Essential Services reauthorization of the proposed one cent transaction and use tax ordinance. The Riverside County Registrar of Voters has completed the official canvas of the election as required by the California Elections Code. The certified results are as follows. Ulysses Cabrera has been elected as mayor with a total of 27,369 votes. Elena Baca Santa Cruz has been elected as council member for District One with a total of 4,792 votes. Erlan Gonzalez has been elected as council member for District Three with a total of 4,925 votes. Measure U passed with a total of 43,551 yes votes. These results are documented in the official canvas, which is attached as Exhibit Eight to the resolution before you tonight. Thank you. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Really appreciate the staff report. And at this time, we will bring it back to the dais. And I will look to my colleagues to see if there's any questions, any deliberation. If, if not, it looks like we have some comments from Councilmember Delgado.
So, yeah, no, no comments or no question, or no comments, no questions. But I personally wanna thank you, Mayor, for your leadership and congratulate you for a well-run campaign. Elena Baca Santa Cruz, congratulations on your victory and your first full four-year term. Looking forward to working with you both. Erlan, congratulations. Obviously, everybody follows all the races, and yours was no different for us. We were watching it. And you ran a very clean race. And like Justin said, you, you did very good. And you came up on top. So congratulations. Looking forward to working with you as well. So Shay, you too. I'm not leaving you out. You, you did great, ma'am. Yeah, you did great. So congratulations. But on a serious note, I, I am looking forward to 2025 and 2026, working with this group of people. And it has been said very poignant tonight and, and several times that I think we have a really good team up here. And I, I say team because obviously, you guys in the city are looking for us for leadership and guidance on everything that goes on in the city, from lights to speed bumps, to restaurants, to libraries, to, to everything. So you guys are looking for this group of people up here, including Erlan, to lead the city. And I have full confidence that we're gonna be able to do that with this group of people up here. Because I think we're all different in our ways, and we all bring something to the table that, that makes us strong. So I, I think it's gonna be a great year. Congratulations and looking forward to 2025.
Thank you, council member. And we'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate everyone on winning their race. I would like to congratulate, formally congratulate Erlan in winning his race, and congratulate Elena Baca Santa Cruz on winning her race and the mayor on his second term. As it's been said a number of times, even if you did not win, congratulations. The mayor can talk to you a number of people. Him and I have had some, some battles and for the seat for District Four. I, I congratulate all of you that stepped up and ran. It is never easy. It is not as, there are days that are hard. And I don't know if many of you know, in the city of Moreno Valley, because we live where we live, it's typically 100 degrees when you're out here knocking on doors. And I did it last year, I did it last time with, with two little ones pushing a stroller. So I say that it is not easy to step up to the plate. To the young woman that spoke earlier about making sure that the young people are involved. Honestly, a lot of the decisions that are made up here, we may never get to see the full fruition of them. Every decision that we make up here is always for the future and the callback to the future of what's, of what's to be. So I encourage you all to stay involved, to come, show up, and, you know, to, to give us a mouthful or an earful, not like some residents who wanna be last all the time. Not you, Luis, cuz I love you. But to please just come up here, let us know and keep us informed about like, what's really going on out there. So again, congratulations to everyone. I look forward to working another two years with two of you and to, into starting to develop a relationship with Erlan. And see, Ed, I didn't leave you out either. Ed is my bestie up here. I look forward to working with my best friend, Ed, for the next two years also. Thank you.
I thought Brian was your best friend. Little competition going on.
Claudia's my favorite.
There you go.
See, Claudia's my favorite.
Gotta find all the synonyms, right? All right. Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Appreciate that. Any further comments, any deliberation? If not, we can entertain a motion and a second.
I motion to approve the staff's recommendation number one, accepting the results of the 2024 election.
And I will proudly second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernard?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Yes. That passes unanimously with four yeses. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And our final item, now is time for the speeches and the oaths of office, the moment that everybody's been waiting for. And that is Item H, the administration of the Oaths of Office to Newly Elected Officials. And I will turn it over to our city clerk to get us started with those oaths of office.
Thank you, Mayor. So we will now administer the Oaths of Office for our newly elected officials, as you stated, Mayor. The first one will be the mayor's oath, which will be administered by Karina Tamaio, followed by your remarks. You wanna hold? All right, we'll get started. I state your name?
I, Ulysses Cabrera.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much to my amazing wife, my son, and my mom for administering the oath. That is the second time. We actually, the first time that I took the oath for mayor, had the same exact setup, the same exact scenario. So definitely always, you know, don't wanna sound like Vin Diesel up here, but family, right? Family is just, you know, God, family, and then everything else, right? I think that goes for all of us, and it goes unsaid. We don't have to say it, but it's always nice to, to spend time with family and just to be here with all of you. And I do have a speech that I have prepared and have been waiting for a while to, to give. And so just bear with me for a few moments as I give a few remarks here. And so, good evening. And so, good evening to all of Moreno Valley. Again, everybody that's joining us here in person, everybody that is watching at home. Tonight, I stand before you, filled with gratitude, humility, and a great sense of responsibility. To each and every one of you who placed your trust in me for a second term, thank you. This is not just a personal victory, it is a victory for our entire community, for our shared values, and for the belief that when we come together, there is nothing that we cannot achieve. First, I want to take a moment to thank God. Without his guidance, I would not be standing here today. I am grateful for his blessings, for the strength and wisdom that he has given me, and for the incredible opportunity to serve all of the people of Moreno Valley. It is through his grace that I have been able to embark on this journey and overcome the challenges, many challenges, along the way. Now, I would like to thank my family, who have been my rock, my inspiration, and my greatest source of strength. To my wife, Karina, the First Lady of Moreno Valley, you are my partner in every sense of the word. Your love, your support, your patience have been my foundation. Thank you for always standing by my side and for believing me, believing in me during the toughest of times, and for being the heart of our family. I love you. To my son, Osaius, you are my joy and my motivation. Every day, you remind me of why this work matters. You remind me of why I do what I do. Being a parent and a mayor can be quite the balancing act. The other day, my son asked if I could make bedtime shorter and playtime longer, and I told him, I'll bring it to the council for a vote, but I can't promise anything. And to our daughter, who will join our family in early two thousand and twenty five, though you haven't arrived yet, you are already a part of everything that I do. Karina and I are so excited to welcome you into this world and build a brighter future for you and your brother. To my parents, Angelina and Martin, thank you for instilling in me the values of hard work, integrity, and compassion. Mom, your unwavering faith in me has carried me through every challenge. Every time I brought home that report card, and it didn't have all straight A's, I had that B plus on there, you challenged me to do better, and because of that, I'm here today. Dad, your perseverance and dedication has shaped who I am today. The lessons you've taught me will forever guide my path, and I hope to make all of you proud every day. And to the rest of my family, my siblings, my sister Denise, my brother Martin Junior, my entire campaign team, all of the residents of Moreno Valley, thank you. This victory belongs to you as much as it belongs to me. It is your belief in our shared vision that has made this moment possible. When I first took office in Moreno Valley, on June seventeenth of two thousand and seventeen, I was twenty-two years old, just past my twenty-first birthday. And now, over the past two years, as mayor, I've had the privilege of witnessing the strength, resilience, and potential of Moreno Valley firsthand. As some of you may know, I grew up in Compton, California. I'm the son of Mexican immigrants, who have worked hard to provide for our family, to give us the opportunity, a story that so many of us share. Coming from a working-class family, the odds of standing here before you were slim, but against all odds, I'm standing here today. Because of my passion to serve my community, I nestle down before you as the youngest mayor in Moreno Valley's history, a testament to what is possible when we believe in ourselves and in each other. President John F. Kennedy once said, "Ask not what you can do for your country, ask, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." That question has guided me throughout these years. Together, we've asked what we could do for Moreno Valley, and together, we've turned that question into action. Together, we've accomplished so much. We've approved and began construction on Moreno Valley's fourth library. We broke ground on the senior center expansion. We completed a fifty million dollar road repavement project and started another twenty million dollar project to fix all those pesky potholes around town. I remember voting to approve the Kaiser Hospital expansion as a council member, and then attending the ribbon cutting as mayor, a project that strengthened our health, our, our healthcare system and our economy. As I look to the future, I look forward to working on several key policy areas that will continue to shape our city. Economic development means more than attracting businesses. It means creating opportunities, creating jobs for all of our residents. From new businesses like Dutch Bros, for all the coffee lovers like myself, to Sprouts and eighty-five C Bakery Cafe, to the Loma Linda Medical Clinic that is under construction as we speak, off of Eucalyptus and Day Street, we're ensuring that Moreno Valley continues to thrive and grow. Additionally, through our updated MOU with Moreno Valley Colleges, I Make Innovation Center, one of my favorite places to be, just ask my wife, all residents now have free access to a state-of-the-art facility where innovation and learning come together. We also installed, many of you in this room were a part of that, we installed ten little free libraries at ten of our city parks, helping to make educational resources more accessible to families across our community. And I just love seeing, every time that I happen to be at a park, like Santiago Park or anywhere else where one of those little free libraries is installed, to see the kids run up and the families run up and get the books, right? To take those books home and then to put books back so that others can also read. Reducing homelessness remains a top priority, and I'm proud that we funded homeless service nonprofit organizations that provide the essential services to the homeless community. These partnerships are making a tangible difference in helping individuals and families find stability and hope for the future, and there is more work to be done. We're also literally painting the city through our public art initiatives, as you heard in public comment. These efforts have already resulted in numerous murals and art installations across our city, and I'm excited to share that there is much more to come. Public art doesn't just beautify our community, it inspires creativity and pride in every single one of us. And finally, public safety remains a cornerstone of our vision for Moreno Valley. By reducing crime and strengthening our partnerships with first responders, we will ensure that every resident feels secure and safe in their home and in their city. One thing I've learned as mayor is that teamwork makes the dream work, especially when you're working with a city council. It's not like building IKEA furniture, or it's kind of like building IKEA furniture. It's not always easy, but when we work together, we build something great, even if there's a few screws left over. I could tell some of you have been there. Now, as we look ahead, I want to take a moment to recognize and congratulate a few individuals who have achieved victories in this election season. Congratulations to our Congress member, Mark Tocano, on his reelection to the U.S. House of Representatives. Congratulations to our new state senator, Sabrina Cervantes, who just moved from the Assembly to the State Senate to represent us. And my dear friend, a mentor of mine, a brother from another mother, right? Dr. Corey Jackson, on being reelected to the California State Assembly. Thank you for joining us here tonight, Dr. Jackson. Always appreciate it. To my colleagues, my new colleague, Erlan Gonzalez, who in just a few moments is going to be sitting up here with us, from District three, you bring with you a wealth of knowledge and experience from your years of service on the Planning Commission, right? And also, your work at the county of Riverside. Your family has a rich history and deep roots in our city, and I very much look forward to working with you as we move Moreno Valley forward together. To my colleague from District one, Councilmember Elena Baca Santa Cruz, congratulations on your reelection. I look forward to collaborating with you to deliver meaningful results for the residents of our city over the next several years. To my other two colleagues that are here behind me on the dais, Councilmember Delgado from District two, from the north, and Councilmember Shailinda Bernard from District four, from the south. I appreciate your service and the opportunity to work alongside you. I look forward to building on the many areas that we've collaborated and continuing our progress for Moreno Valley. Together, I am confident we can continue finding that consensus among the five of us on the council, because that is when we're at our best. As President Barack Obama once said, "The road ahead will be long, our climb will be steep. We may not get there in one year or even in one term, but I have never been more hopeful than I am tonight." That's how I feel about this city. Hopeful. Hopeful because of our residents, who show resilience and determination every single day. Hopeful because our businesses, which continue to innovate and invest in our community. Hopeful because of our youth, who inspire us to dream bigger and work harder for the future. Our city's strength lies in its people. Moreno Valley is resilient, innovative, and full of promise and opportunity. Together, we will build on our successes, face our challenges head-on, and create a future that we can all be proud of. Our journey as a city is far, far from over, and the road ahead will require resilience, determination, and unity. Together, we've proven that there's no challenge that we cannot overcome and no dream too big for Moreno Valley. Let us continue to move forward boldly, building on this progress, lifting each other up and striving to create a community where every resident feels empowered, valued, and secure. The future of Moreno Valley is bright because of every single one of you. Together, we will achieve extraordinary things, and together, we will ensure that our city remains a beacon of hope, like the M on the M Mountain, full of opportunity and success. So once again, I want to thank all of the residents of Moreno Valley, everyone who participated in the elections, regardless of who you voted for, because those are rights that so many have sacrificed for over the past several hundred years, and we could even go back thousands of years. So many people that have contributed to make sure that this experiment that we call the United States of America continues, that we can honor our constitution, that we follow the rule of law, and that we respect all of our beliefs, all of our freedoms, and all of our liberties. So let's make the next two years the best that Moreno Valley has ever seen. Thank you.
We will now show, um, break for a short little ten-minute recess. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Elena Baca Santa Cruz.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of America.
And the Constitution.
Of California.
Of the State of California.
Sorry about that. And I take, and I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well, that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
A little small, can you see me? Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight to share this special moment with me. I stand before you deeply humbled and honored by the trust and confidence you've placed in me to continue serving you as your council member. This evening is not just about me, it's about all of us. The residents, the families, the community we've built together here in Moreno Valley. First and foremost, I want to thank my family. My daughter, Lorena, my sons, Alex and Joaquin, my grandson Josiah, and his mother, Aleah. Your love, encouragement, and unwavering support allow me to dedicate myself fully to the residents of Moreno Valley. You're my foundation, and I could not do this without you. I want to thank my mentor and my role model, Supervisor Exogen Guterres, Moreno Valley's first directly elected mayor. My mother mentored you, and now you've guided me and become one of my greatest advocates. Your leadership and belief in me has been invaluable. I want to acknowledge Louise and Bob Palomares, who are a constant presence at council meetings, always supporting me and our community. I want to thank everyone who worked on my campaign, those who knocked on doors with me, put up large campaign signs, put up lawn signs on their homes, those who phone-banked, those who put signs up on their businesses, and those who supported my campaign online. Every part of this is what made this campaign successful. To those here tonight, to my colleagues elected and other local entities, to my neighbors, to my father-in from Arizona, to my neighbors and friends, my colleagues on our, on the commissions, and to all of you here, thank you. To those who endorsed my campaign, thank you for believing in me. Thank you for believing in my leadership and vision. Your support meant so much to me, and it was instrumental in carrying our campaign forward. I want to specifically thank organizations like the Riverside Sheriff's Association, Cal Fire Local 2881, and the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters for standing behind me. Your trust and confidence remind me of the responsibility I carry, and I am committed to honoring it. Finally, I want to thank the residents of Moreno Valley. To every voter who participated in this election, thank you for making your voices heard. Your trust in me is an honor I don't take lightly, and I promise to work every day to prove myself worthy of it. This campaign has been an incredible journey, filled with meaningful conversations and connections. One of the most special moments for me has been hearing stories about my mother. Victoria Baca. Whether it was during her time on the council or her advocacy for children with special needs, every story that is shared with me reminds me of the great impact that she had in people's lives. Those stories are a gift, and they inspire me to keep her legacy, to move her legacy forward. When I first ran for office, it was to fulfill the promise that my family made to the city when she ran in 2020. Her passing left a void, not just in our family, but in the community that she loved so deeply. Sitting in her office now, I feel pride and presence. It gives me strength and joy to serve. What began as a mission to finish her term has grown into a passion for public service, and I'm committed to carrying her work forward. Service above self, that has been my guiding principle through this journey. There are days when the work is long and challenging, but I remind myself of the people counting on me. Representing this city is an honor, and I approach it with pride and energy. As we celebrate Moreno Valley's 40th anniversary, I reflect on how I've grown up alongside this city. I started high school here in Moreno Valley when the city was just six years old. I played Little League at Sunnymead Park, the very same fields where my children played, and my grandson does now. I went to school in Moreno Valley Unified, as my children did, and now my grandson. This is, city isn't just where I live, it's where I've built my life, raised my family, and made countless memories. Our city is strong because of its people, diverse, resilient, and united. This election reflects that spirit. It's clear that the voters chose to support leaders who understand Moreno Valley's priorities and have the experience to get things done. I'm looking forward to working together with my colleagues on the council to bring positive progress to every corner of our community. Moving forward, I will focus on the same principles we emphasized during the campaign. Creating good jobs by attracting businesses that bring quality jobs to Moreno Valley, helping our families and our economy thrive. Expanding affordable housing to ensure that everyone has access to a safe, affordable place to call home. This remains a top priority. To enhancing engage, community engagement, I'm continued to bringing more, committed to bringing more events and opportunities that will unite us as a city, while continuing to listen and address your concerns. I'm also excited to continue working on projects like renovating our parks and infrastructure. These projects create safe, modern spaces where families can gather, play, and grow together. As your representative, I promise to work hard for this community, to always be available, and to put the needs of our residents first. Our city's motto, "People, Pride, Progress," will guide every decision I make. With integrity, dedication, and an open heart, I am committed to listening, learning, and saw, serving all of you to the best of my ability. I'd like to end with a reflection that guides me every day. Everything I am and everything that I will ever be, I owe to my mother. Her legacy is my inspiration, her values are my foundation, and everything I do is for her and for you. As we look ahead, let us remember that we are stronger together. It is through our diversity, our shared vision, our collective efforts, that we will build a brighter, safer, and more united Moreno Valley. Thank you for trusting me to serve you. Let's move forward together with pride and progress. Thank you.
We will now recess for ten minutes.
Okay, it's eight o'clock, so we're almost there, guys. Okay, um, good evening, honored guests, family, friends, and community members. I want to begin by thanking God. He is through His guidance, strength, and blessings that this moment was made possible. I also want to take a moment to honor my father, who passed away in 2015. I know he's watching over me today, and I, and I hope he's proud of his son. His values, sacrifices, and love continue to inspire me every day. And I carry his lessons with me as I step into this role to serve our community. Today, I stand here humbled and grateful to be sworn in as your city council member for Marina Valley District 3, the heart of Marina Valley. This moment is not just a personal milestone, it is a testament to the shared commitment we all have to make, to making our city a place where families can truly thrive. Public service is not just a commitment I take seriously, it is also a legacy in my family. I want to share a little bit about myself. On my paternal side, uh, the, the brother of my great-grandfather served as municipal president of Tepetongo Zacatecas in the 1920s. On my maternal side, my great-grandfather and my uncle both served as municipal presidents in Huascar Jalisco in the 1950s and 1980s respectively. This legacy of leadership and dedication to community serves, service inspires me every day and re-inforces my commitment to serve the people of Marina Valley with the same passion and integrity. Standing here today, I am reminded of the incredible volunteers and canvassers who gave their time and energy to spread the word about our campaign. Excuse me, I'm battling cold. Many of you came from different organizations, united by a shared belief in the vision we have for Marina Valley. Your dedication, passion, and countless hours of work made this day happen. I am forever grateful for your support and commitment. I also want to thank my colleagues and peers at the Housing Authority. Your encouragement, support, and belief in me throughout this journey have been invaluable. The work we do every day to provide housing stability for families has been a driving force and commitment to public service, and I am proud to bring those shared values to my role on the city council. I'm confident my colleagues and I will find creative solutions to assist Marina Valley, Marina Valley families that are struggling to pay rent and to make ends meet. During my campaign, I spoke with countless residents, families, workers, and business owners. I heard your concerns and your aspirations. Together, we envision a Marina Valley that embraces responsible growth and development, creates more walkable neighborhoods, expands commercial opportunities, and fosters civic spaces that brings us closer together through culture, dining, and connection. As we move forward, I'm excited to propose new initiatives that strengthen our community and enhance our quality of life. We need to develop a regional sports park. A sports park would not only provide recreational opportunities, also stimulate growth, attract visitors, foster a sense of pride in our city, excuse me. Initially, we made her have a sister-sister relationship with Juan dos Lagos, but he has been dormant for some time. I want to work, don't you realize this part relationship, but also expand it. By realizing these ties, we can celebrate our shared heritage. Furthermore, I want to establish new partnerships with other cities across the globe, creating pathways for innovation and mutual growth that enrich Marina Valley and its residents. Also want to, uh, create public-private collaborations with unions. Unions are vital to upholding workers' rights and creating equitable opportunities for local families. By incorporating unions into our partnerships, we not only honor their contributions, but also build a foundation of fairness and shared prosperity for all. Almost there, guys, sorry. I would also like to acknowledge the campaign team, whose dedication and hard work were instrumental in making this moment possible. Jack Yao, your commitment and belief in our vision fueled this journey. You pushed me to be better, and I hope you pushed me, pushed you too. Your guidance, analysis, and suggestions were essential. To my, Maribel Núñez, for sending me constant reminders and shaking it with me, making sure I didn't leave any rock unturned. To my four competitors in the election, thank you for your dedication and bringing your ideas and perspectives to the race. Your prescience pushed me to work harder, refine my vision, and connect more deeply with the residents of Marina Valley. I want to acknowledge that the journey to this moment wasn't always easy. There were naysayers and challenges along the way, but the only fuelled my determination to campaign harder and reach the finish line. Their doubts became my motivation to work even more tirelessly to prove that our vision for Marina Valley is worth fighting for. I'm deeply grateful for the support and encouragement of Assemblyman Corey Jackson, and other Kermit and former elected officials who endorsed our campaign. Your belief in our shared vision for Marina Valley has meant so much, and I look forward to honoring that trust through my, through my work on the council. I look forward to working closely with fellow council members to bring meaningful change for the betterment of all Marina Valley. Congratulations to Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz on your victory. I just want to express my enthusiasm for collaborating Councilmember De La Do and Councilmember Bernard. As we unite our efforts to tackle the challenges ahead and create opportunities that benefit every resident. I want to extend my deepest, deepest gratitude to Mayor Ulises Cabrera. Congratulations on your strong reelection victory, Mayor Cabrera. Your leadership and guidance were fundamental in helping me reach this point. Your strong mandate reflects the trust and confidence that people in Marina Valley have in you. I look forward to working together to ensure our city thrives. To those signed supporters who may not be here today or whom I may have inadvertently forgotten to mention, your support has not gone unnoticed. Whether through words of encouragement, quiet acts of kindness, or simply believing in this vision, you have played a role in making this day possible. I am deeply grateful to my family, including my mom and brothers in the González family, the Ruiz family, and especially to my wife, Almar Ruiz. My children, Juan Pablo and Nicolas, who are my greatest joys and sources of strength. Thank you for your love, support, and belief in me. To there we build a Marina Valley that thrives for all. Thank you. Sorry about that.
We will now recess to, for 10 minutes.